Good evening, everybody. Before we start our meeting tonight, we have a recognition to speak about. This recognition is the Stewart's Creek Middle School's Lady Falcon softball team, and I think some of them are here. It looks like it, yeah. They have won the 2022 TMSAA Class II A Softball State Champions. So... If we can get Coach and you ladies to come up front, we'd like to recognize you.
If you will, just line up.
Congratulations, you guys. You did an awesome job. I know that Councilman Short, and I believe Mayor Reed, came out to send you guys off on your bus, and we got a text from Mayor Reed that said, "If you're coming, it's too late. They're already gone." So, speed. You guys move with speed, right? So, we've got some awards and certificates to give you guys tonight, but first, I'm going to ask Coach to say a few words about your young ladies here, and maybe you want to introduce them by name, and I'm going to give you the microphone, okay?
Okay. I'll do my best. We had a great season. I told one of my dads that's with us tonight that he asked me what I thought about the team back in January of this year, and I said, "If I don't screw this up, we'll win the state championship." And he said he went back to his car laughing at me under his breath, you know, like, "Yeah, we can win a state championship." They outscored their opponents 259 to 66 in runs. They had one loss on the season and lost that game 3 to 2. They were down 8 to 0 in the third inning of the championship game and came back and beat that team 16 to 8. So, they were, we were all about the speed and the hits, and they played great defense. We had nine 8th graders on this team out of 17 players, so Stewart's Creek High School should be getting some very good ballplayers next year. They're great young ladies, they're good citizens, they're good in the classroom, and I'm very proud of them. All of them couldn't be here tonight, but we thank you and the town of Smyrna and the mayor for having us.
If you would, tell everybody who you are, then hand the microphone, so they can just tell everybody their name.
Okay. I'm Jess Shipley. I'm Smyrna, class of 81, so I've been here for a little while.
I'm Piper Tracy.
In what grade were you?
Oh, I'm, well, at the time, I was in 7th grade, and now I'm going into 8th grade.
I'm Leah Lovell, and I'm in, I was in 8th grade, now I'm going to freshman year.
I am Kayden Smashburn, and I was in 6th grade, and I'm going to 7th grade.
I'm Star Paredes, and I was in 6th grade, now I'm going to 7th grade.
I'm Riley Willis, I was in 7th grade, going into 8th grade.
I'm Lexi Pope, and I was an 8th grader, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Elena Wilson, and I was 8th grade, I'm going to freshman.
I'm Chloe Quiggle, and I was in 7th grade, now I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Jalen Stenbridge, and I was in 8th grade, going into freshman year.
So, I want to know who the MVP is. Will anybody raise their hands and say, "That's me"?
We actually didn't have one.
I'm just kidding, right?
Because, because we had so many good, we just...
I didn't want to start a fight. I thought maybe I'd cause a little trouble. That's what I do, but...
You could probably, if you got, if we weren't in front of cameras, they'd...
Well, we want to congratulate you guys on a wonderful season, representing the town of Smyrna the way you did in Stewart Creek Middle School. I know our council's very proud of you, and we want to give you a round of applause. I've got... Pretty special. In this envelope is a whole bunch of certificates for you guys, and I'm going to give them to Coach and let him give those to you individually, okay? But congratulations. We really appreciate you guys coming out, letting us brag on you a little bit tonight. Thank you. All right?
Thank you, Coach.
Appreciate you so much.
All right. Out the door, parents.
How about a picture? Did we get a picture?
Get all pictures wanted?
Okay.
All right, let's go. There ain't gonna forget, but I would like to get a picture of one of us.
Oh. Nobody left.
Everybody's in the lobby.
Brian, was it something you said?
I thought they were here to see me.
Wrong again.
Wrong again.
Yeah. All right, now we've got the room emptied out. I'll call this meeting to order for the June 7, 2022 Smyrna Town Council meeting. First thing on our agenda tonight is a prayer. Is Chaplain Terry Fraser in here or out there? Chaplain, would you come to the podium and lead us in prayer? And afterwards, Assistant Town Manager Todd Spearman, if you're out there, we're going to need you afterwards. For the pledge.
Join me in prayer. Father God, it is so good to be here tonight. Father, thank you for the town of Smyrna. Thank you for all the leadership that's in this room. Thank you for the citizens and the townspeople of Smyrna coming here tonight. Father, may everything that is said and done here tonight be honoring and glorifying to you. Let us put our souls aside and just listen to each other talk, and have a wonderful meeting, Father. We just ask that you bless our town, keep us all well and safe, especially as we leave tonight. Let us be weather aware and make everyone have a nice, safe trip home tonight, Father. And once again, we just leave all of the proceedings of this meeting at the feet of your Son Jesus, and we praise you and we love him. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain and Todd. Next, we have roll call. Amber?
Okay. Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell?
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles?
Here.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
And Mayor Reed.
Thank you, Amber. So, next, we'll have the approval or correction of the minutes of the May 10, 22 regular meeting and the May 26, 22 special called work session meeting with the town council. Are they in order, council?
Orders to form, Vice Mayor.
We'll take a motion on the minutes then.
Do we approve the minutes?
Motion from Tim, second.
Second.
Second from Steve. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Brian, Correspondents and Communications?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Vice Mayor.
We have some more awards and recognitions that we're going to do tonight. The first one is a proclamation for men's health. I see Lou Caputo is here. He is the CEO of TriStar Stonecrest. So, do you want to read the proclamation for us, Amber?
Yes, sir. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas COVID-19 variants continue to impact lives across the country, with the Centers for Disease Control reporting that males are more likely to die from this pandemic. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will more likely, will be more likely to participate in health screening. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive attitudes and preventative health practices. And whereas the citizens of Smyrna are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim June to be Men's Health Month and encourage the citizens of this community to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts throughout the year. Proclaim this the 7th day of June 2022.
Welcome, Lou.
Good to be here.
Here's the copy of the proclamation she just read. We want to tell you how thankful we are that we have your hospital right here in our town and all the good things for health and wellness. I want you to be able to say a few words to the public and tell them a little bit about the health of men's health.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, council. We appreciate the Men's Health Network. It was mentioned in the proclamation. They have done a lot of the legwork nationally to raise awareness in men's health. For those with healthcare know that moms, wives tend to be the healthcare decision makers in households. Men, we men tend to be overly proud and stubborn when it comes to healthcare decisions as well. So, it's important for the healthcare community to really promote the importance of men taking control of their own healthcare and not waiting to get the things that we know make a big difference. And that's what we do in the month of June around the entire healthcare community, is encourage men to go get your colonoscopy, go get your prostate exams, take control of your healthcare. It's more important this year than ever. The last two years, we saw everybody put a pause on their healthcare, aside from COVID. We're still seeing the ripple effects of that, particularly with men that decided not to go to their doctor, go to the hospital during COVID for obvious reasons, and we just want to encourage them to get back to see their primary care physicians and do the things that make sense for their health. Appreciate your support.
Glad to do it, and thank you for being here tonight. So, we can give the proclamation. I thought for a minute you'd been looking inside my house, because, you know, my wife stays on me about the very same thing, but I got to say, I'm pretty good about that, and I think most men should, right? So, we are proud people, and sometimes we don't always go to the doctor when we're supposed to. So, we appreciate you guys being here. What's your...
Thank you for your support.
Appreciate you.
So, we have another proclamation.
We do.
You want to go ahead and read that for us?
Yes, sir. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease. And whereas an estimated 6 million people age 65 and over have Alzheimer's disease, and another 200,000 people under the age of 65 have younger onset Alzheimer's disease. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, the fifth leading cause among the elderly, and the fourth leading cause of death in Rutherford County. And whereas in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, caregiver, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure. And whereas the town of Smyrna recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias through its Walk to End Alzheimer's, which is now in its 23rd year. And whereas these efforts to raise funds and awareness have thereby improved the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers in Smyrna. And whereas the week of June 20 has been recognized as a week wherein the town will turn purple in honor of those struggling with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas the month of June 2022 has been declared Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease. Now therefore, mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and urge all residents to wear purple to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease. Proclaim this the 7th day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Is Amber Overcast and Amy Harrison both present? If you ladies will come up, we'd like to present this proclamation to you. I understand there's members of the Walk to End Alzheimer's Committee that may be, or maybe not here? No?
Yes.
Just you? No more? Okay. Well, you're plenty, okay? We're glad to have you. So, say a few words about what you do for the community and share with the citizens a little about the purpose behind the Alzheimer's.
Absolutely. We thank the council for letting us be here and raise awareness for Alzheimer's Association. We do have a walk coming up in October that we're hoping to raise funds for these same initiatives that you just outlined. That is in October at Gateway Island in Murfreesboro, and that is for funding in Rutherford County. And we really try to bring awareness, wear purple, as you can see, and, you know, help fight that disease that's really, really taking a lot of people and their, you know, their families for a bad rod, so...
Did you want to say anything?
No, that's...
No.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, both so much for being here. I know we all know somebody who's been affected by Alzheimer's disease, every one of us. And it's a tough disease to watch happen, right? It's tough to see people just sort of die away in their minds. We appreciate what you do. We appreciate you guys being here. There's your proclamation. Jim would like to get a picture.
All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. I'm getting in my men's health exercise already tonight. All right. Now, we'll move into the consent agenda. Consent agenda is something we bundle together. So, if any council member has anything on the consent agenda they want to pull off and discuss, please let me know, but I'm going to read it quickly for you, and then we'll vote on it. So, item A is the approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with G&amp;W Diesel EVS for the fire department self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, annual flow testing. Item B, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to annual maintenance for the pond at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School. Item C, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an annual service agreement with BHT Resources relative to park system concession stands. Item D, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Mark Oliverius relative to music and sound for the 2022 Independence Day celebration. Item E, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with TDOT for access to live video and information sharing as part of the closed caption television system along the I-24 smart corridor. Item F, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Sweeping Corporation of America for roadway sweeping. Item G, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers for drainage easement along the north side of Old Jefferson Pike to connect existing easements. H, approval of the terms of, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to approve the rankings of the selection committee for the Old Nashville Highway Sidewalk Improvements Project using a CRSSA grant. Item I, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to approve the rankings of the selection committee for the Enon Springs Sidewalk Improvements Project using a TAP grant. Item J, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Eye in the Sky to upgrade the camera system at the wastewater treatment plant. Item K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute annual bid documents from several suppliers relative to water, gas, and sewer. Item L, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the Water Treatment Plant 2022-2023 Annual Bid Contracts for Chemicals. And item M, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Surdant to provide managed firewall and security operations center services. So, that's the consent agenda. Is there any item that anybody on the council wants to pull off and discuss separately?
I would like for you to read item 11, all of the chemical names that are listed in that...
Yeah. Is there any other questions?
It's so easy. You go, let the guy next to you read them, right?
No, I might do that. I'd choose one.
Not tonight.
Even Mayor Reed would probably give that to you if he could, so... Any other questions? Seeing none or hearing none, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
Jury motion?
Second.
And second from Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. So, we'll move on to old business, and the first thing in old business tonight is a public hearing, and I'm going to let Kevin address this before we have the public hearing.
This is above and caring for the rezoning of property on tax 28, parcel 83. It's to be rezoned from R1 to C2. It's requested by Edward Clark. It contains approximately one acre. It's located at 1401 Old Nashville Highway. This is on Old Nashville Highway about 250 feet south of the intersection with Rock Springs Road. The land use plan for the area is the San River corridor character area, so certainly would be consistent with our land use plan for that area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C4, and R1. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing up for anybody that wants to speak for or against this, and if so, just need to come to the podium. You have a few minutes to do so. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
Have a motion, and a second from a G. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have another public hearing. Kevin?
I'm Rex.
Oh, Rex, I'm sorry.
This is a consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The audits and summarized budget for this year are submitted for your consideration. I have attached the changes from first read to second read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the first reading. It is some payroll adjustments from Human Resources Department, Fire Department software, changed financing sources on some road projects, and the Cedar Stone restroom funding. There are two more changes since the workshop. They're increasing the health, welfare, and culture budget by $2,500 contribution to child advocacy, and General Sessions contractual services by $16,600 for assistant district attorney fees. We ask you to approve this ordinance adopting the budget.
All right. Thank you, Rex. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing up for anybody that wants to come to the podium, speak for or against it. Would do so now. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Steve, second from Tim. Any other discussion?
I had a question about the ADA payment. That's the 16, is it for overtime or what's that?
No, we have a contract, and you're going to hear some more in just a few minutes in this agenda. We were approached, at this time, we pay $100 stipend on a per visit basis for the ADA and for the DA's, and we were asked this year to consider a increase in that. We negotiated an increase that basically will move those charges to $150 per visit for those. So, that's what that is about. That was less than what they asked for, but we were able to find some money to make that work.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure that was consistent with what's coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any others? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Rex, you're still up.
Okay. A budget amendment for fiscal year 2022. These are the fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. The general fund, Stormwater Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Dead Service Fund, Water and Sewer Fund, and Gas Fund have some line items that need appropriated. The significant portions of the amendments are due to the pay increase and related benefits along with the computer infrastructure project. The smaller items were due to the increase in the cost of gasoline and unforeseen expenses, and you can see the proposed ordinance, and all of these amounts are offset by current year revenues. I have added a budget amendment since the first reading for the year-end transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. We're asking that you approve this amendment.
All right, this, too, is a public hearing, so we will open the floor for anybody that wants to speak for or against this item. If so, come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Do we approve?
Jury made a motion and second, anybody?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any other discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it looks like you get to stay at the podium, Rex.
I'm here. This is a consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. It is a second reading. The property tax ordinance establishes the property tax rate, and this is a reappraisal year, and we recommend the town adopt the certified tax rate as established by the Rutherford County Tax Assessor's Office. We, our first notice was a tax rate of .5190. It was revised to .5193, and yesterday, we got notice that it's changed again to .5323, and hopefully, that's the last change, but if not, we'll have to weigh it back to you for another reading.
And real quick, Rex, if you would, just while you're at the podium, sort of explain what this means to the public and why it's not really... what this means to the public and why it's not really affecting them very much, if any at all.
It's not a tax increase. It's, the concept is a tax revenue neutral idea. Like, when I got my assessment letter in the mail, my property went up 43%. So, on average, it was around 32, 33% for the whole town. So my property tax will be a little bit higher than what it was last year, but it'll be close to what it was. So even though your property tax won't be exactly, it may be up a little bit, it may be down a little bit. So, like I say, it's supposed to be neutral, revenue neutral in its concept.
Which is good news for our citizens, as we see.
It is.
It's not a tax increase at all. So, all right, this is a public hearing, so I will call anybody that has anything they want to say regarding this topic to the podium. We'll open the public hearing for anybody that wants to visit. Name, address, and where you live.
Yes, sir. Dan Epright, 1014 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee. Just for everybody's edification, what was the rate last year? I think it was like .70?
.70 something.
Seven, .707.
.707, and now it's .5?
323.
5323. Okay, so.
And it's keeping revenue neutral with those assessment increases?
Right. You know, and I just thought it'd be nice to have those two numbers on the record next to each other.
Excellent. Thank you, Dan. Any others? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to the council for a motion.
Motion that we approve the certified tax rate. If it changes again, will we have?
We'll have to bring it back and regroup.
So we're approving the 5323?
Yes.
And a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, that's all the public hearings we have for now, so we'll go on to new business, and Kevin's on his way up to give us the planning commission report. The first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 61, requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Jamie L. Turner, containing 1.1 acres. Property is located at 8269 Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. This is a first reading.
Yes, this is an annexation request with an R3 zoning, a request attached to it. It is on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, about 800 feet south of the intersection with Morton Lane. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential development in this area, so it is consistent with our land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of a couple of things, the PRD of Blackney and Stewart's Glen, or what's the surrounding zoning in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by CUD, and the CUD has indicated that there is adequate fire flow at this location for single-family residential development. There is an existing house on this parcel. Planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Thank you, Kevin. Tim, anything you need to add from planning at all?
Nothing other than, you know, we always take a good look at this to make sure surrounding zoning is consistent, and it was, so we voted to approve with the staff comments that surrounded it.
All right. Any questions for Kevin on this? All right, seeing none, we'll look for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
H.G., second. Any further discussion? I will not be voting on this one. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to point out, I apologize that typically we have maps. I know they're in the packet, but they're not on the screen tonight. I kind of dropped the ball on that one. I thought we had that taken care of, but I promise for the citizens watching, I apologize that you're not seeing these maps, but we will get those taken care of in the next cycle. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Brian. Yes, we have them here, but yeah, I was wondering kind of where they went.
Yep.
All right, item number two, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of PRD and R1 zoning of properties located on Tax Map 51, Parcels 807 and 811, requested by D.R. Horton, Inc., on behalf of James P. and Marilyn K. McHugh, and Michael D. and Marie Burke, containing 48.83 acres. Properties are located at 6304 and 6588 Lee Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is a request. It is, as you stated, on Lee Road. It's about 2,000 feet west of the intersection with Montgomery Way. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family here as well. Surrounding zoning is R3 and PRD, which are the Olive Branch, Buckingham Hills, and Gwen Farms PRDs in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by CUD. The fire flow in this area is approximately 600 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, which would not meet the, be adequate without having fire sprinkler systems in the houses, and so the developer would be required to install fire sprinkler systems to meet the fire code. Sewer will temporarily have to connect through Napa Valley Drive, which is an existing street in Buckingham Hills Development, until the Olive Branch Sewer's main is completed, at which time it could be connected through the green space out to Lee Road. There is an existing house on each parcel, which would be removed as a part of this development. Included with this request, per staff recommendation, is the annexation of approximately 2,356 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Lee Road, which would basically be in front from the western border of these tracks all the way to the Montgomery Way intersection, which everything on the north side of Lee Road in that area has been annexed as well, so it would provide, the town would have the ownership of the right-of-way in front of all those developments. The request of PRD is for an 88 lot, single-family development on 45.2 acres, and approximately 3.63 acres would be zoned R1. Access would be from Lee Road in one location with a connection to Napa Valley Drive to the east, and Stubb Street would be extended to the western border of the development as well as to the northern border, where a connection is planned to the Walnut Ridge Development. Houses would range from 1,651 to 3,000 square feet, be a mix of brickstone and cement siding. Did attach the pattern book that was submitted, which had other details regarding the proposed PRD. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, 641 against, with one condition, that a traffic study be submitted, and any recommendation for improvements that are made in the study will be required to be constructed by the developer. Staff would also recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Kevin. So you guys heard everything from Kevin and his recommendations. Do we have any questions for him?
Can you talk a little bit about the fact that the water flow is not adequate, so that means that all the homes will have to have the sprinkler systems?
Yes, all the homes will have to have fire sprinkler systems. The fire flow is not adequate, and there are no planned improvements by CUD to bring the fire flow up to where it would be adequate without sprinkler systems. And so that they would have to, all the homes would have to have fire sprinkler systems included, as well as, I guess, any other structure potentially as well, but certainly the homes would have to be.
Okay. And then for the PRD, there's 88 single-family lots, and I remember from the planning commission meeting, does that, is that equal to like two lots, two homes per acre? Is that correct?
It's, yeah, 88 lots on 45 acres are almost, almost exactly two, yes.
So it'll be two homes per acre, you say, and then the other section is R1, so it's, the lots are bigger?
Well, I believe that the initial plan at least is, I think there's going to be one home built on that 3.6 acres.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the initial plan, that one of the sellers is going to actually build a new home there, is my understanding. Certainly potentially could have 15,000 square foot lots there with the hardwoods on.
Okay.
But these are not half-acre lots. It's just that the entire subdivision has some green spaces such as that built in.
Yes, quite a bit of green space, which you have a, you're right, there's not half-acre lots, but the overall density is about two per acre.
Backfacing in roads and?
Absolutely. Well, the perimeter has a lot of green space and retention, it looks like. Going back to the water again, are there some existing surrounded houses, surrounding houses, they're not sprinkled, correct?
That's correct.
So in the future, I mean, there's still raw land around this subdivision. Will whatever follows this probably have to be sprinkled also?
I certainly think that's potentially, sure. I mean, each individual development will have to look at that individually, and it's, it may be at some point that there are some upgrades that happen, that the fire flow gets increased, but as of this, as of right now, there are no, nothing, there's nothing planned by CUD to make those improvements, at least, but that's what they've indicated us.
Okay. Above that is Walnut Ridge. Now, is Walnut Ridge on the books now?
The first section is, if you look on the drawing kind of east of there, there's some roads indicated there coming north out of Buckingham Hills. That first section is, I mean, it's under development right now. Homes being built in that phase of it, and the overall master plan, it would include area to the west, and would be a road that would be stubbed into this area here.
On page four, there's a color keyed, pretty, pretty map. Color keyed shows all the surrounding subdivisions, and it shows Walnut Ridge going all the way over to Rock Springs Road. Is that?
I think it's all of one ownership, and certainly it could happen that way, or at this time, all this has been annexed, so that's that area immediately, the map directly west of the, to the west of it, next to it there, and the area that is zoned R3, it's all that has been approved at this time as a part of that development. There's some topo issues in that area, and I think they're going to eventually, there's going to have to be some pretty major water line extensions to happen.
We've not actually annexed all of that area that is?
That's correct.
I'm going to go back to the water as well. Is this the first homes that we're, we got required in Smyrna?
Sprinklers?
We've had some developments in the past where the fire flow is not adequate, but there's some upgrades coming, and so I think we had a few houses that did get built with some sprinkler systems. Most of them have not. We've had, and many years ago, we had some requirements for sprinkler systems that we have kind of went away from, where there were some town homes built with sprinkler systems and things like that. This really is the first time we've had an overall development, where the whole development's going to put sprinkler systems.
And I know H.G. asked about the area right next to it. Is that because they didn't have it because the specs have changed since those were built?
I think it's topo related.
Okay.
Could be some of that. I don't know exactly. There's not any sprinkler systems in any of those developments. Many of those are more recent to where, where they may have been, where the requirements were, 1,000 gallons per minute. Some of those were approved under 500 gallons per minute flow.
Okay.
So especially parts of Woodmont, things like that, and also parts of Woodmont is served by Smyrna, the northern half, and the flow may be, may be adequate there, Smyrna system.
Maybe you can answer this, Mark, or Tim might be able to answer. The, I know we had one vote, no? What was, do you know the issue that they had with it?
It was not liking sprinklers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which our ordinance allows for either, you know, having the adequate fire flow of 1,000 gallons or having all the homes or whatever type of buildings you have within this to be sprinkled.
And that's actually in the fire code that allow, permits that? It's basically part of the fire code.
Did they want to allow it without the sprinklers? Is that what the issue was, or?
No.
I think it was preceded with them.
Yeah, it was.
I'm sorry, but you were referring to the developer. The developer's been, from the very beginning, has been proposing sprinkling in the building.
Okay. Thanks. So does the code say either/or, or it says if you can't, if you don't have adequate fire flow, in the alternative, this is what you do?
I think it says either/or, but I'll ask Chief Culberson on the?
I think by sprinkling them, that cuts the fire flow requirement by half.
But doesn't the code say you can sprinkle at 500 or 1,000? It's either/or. It's not, it's not in case you can't get there, you can do this. It's an either/or, but there would be no reason if you can get 1,000 gallons to put sprinklers in it, I mean, because there is a cost associated with that, so.
And as I recall, there's a little bit of a maintenance to those as well.
Sure, there is.
Keep them up and keep them operable.
Jerry, just based on the question you were asking, the chief and I, when I became your town manager about four years ago, this was one of the things that we looked at because we had a fire code that we were employing within the city limits of Smyrna, but there was an interpretation, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, on the rural areas, you get out, you know, in some of these rural areas, and they did allow 500 gallon quantity for fire suppression, but that, we made the decision to move ours to the fire code that we were employing in the town, and we had a lot of conversation about that about three years ago, so that's the reason it's being looked at now on this one.
Is this NFPA?
That's correct.
Well, I see.
Yeah.
International.
Yeah, the international code.
The only drawback I see to it is once you hit 500 gallons, we're not allowed to connect to it. So it was how much, 648?
Like they're saying, the CUD said 600 gallons per minute.
So we have 100 gallons of water per minute is all we have that we could use.
But that's the reason we're, it's required to have sprinklers as well, so.
But they don't sprinkle addicts.
Any other questions about, for chief or Kevin?
It's not a question, but just a comment. I was kind of looking at the setbacks, and it looks like they offset the garages to meet the requirement to have four cars in the garage, in the driveway, so it looks like 35 foot to the garage and 25 foot to the front.
That's correct.
That's, mostly just to point out that that was, that's in line with what we've seen and done in the past, so I appreciate.
You were setting that standard in anything that comes in here because of the off-street parking and so forth.
So essentially, each house with the garage has parking for six.
Right.
Four in the driveway.
Did they say about how many houses will be 3,000?
They didn't say that. It is said to be a range. They did not say a minimum or a certain amount within those ranges.
I noticed in the pattern book that all of them are one and two-story, and all of them are three bedrooms, so.
2,000, so.
Yeah, and I think from a price point, they're just, they've gotten crazy, you know, everything's higher, so.
I was excited when I saw 3,000, because we don't see a whole of those.
There's some coming, it sounds like there'll be some there.
Yeah.
I also like all the green space that they are providing along the outer ridge. I think that's good also.
All right, any other comments or questions? None, we'll entertain a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion from Jerry.
Second.
Second from Tim. Any other discussion, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have 51. All right, moving on to the next item, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located at Tax Map 28G, Group A, Parcel 1.01, from R4 to C2, requested by John Lee. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 0.4 acre and is located south of Sam Ridley West. This is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a request for a piece of property. It's south of Sam Ridley and west of Old Nashville Highway. This property does fall within our, as you would expect, our Sam Ridley Corridor character area, so this C2 zoning is certainly consistent with our land. area, so this C2 zoning is certainly consistent with our laners plan. Surrounding zoning is all C2. This parcel does have no road frontage, but the adjoining parcel to the north has the same ownership and the plan has to combine the requested parcel with that track and develop the resulting lot as one overall parcel. Staff did recommend that this combination occur prior to the effective date of any zoning or change because this requested track does not meet the minimum lot size requirements of C2 and so on its own, so, but when it's combined, it won't be an issue. That probably should have been done as a part of the purchase of the land, since it is a division of land of less than five acres, but it was done without a plat, and so this would rectify that situation. The planning commission did recommend approval with the condition that that plat be submitted and recorded with Resher's office prior to the, the second reading. And staff would also recommend approval.
Kevin, how, how big is that lot to the north that we're...
Uh, it's, it's over, it's roughly an acre, maybe just under an acre, something like that.
With this, it becomes about an acre and a half, a little less than an acre and a half.
Something like that, yeah.
Guess a crazy question, as you mentioned that he owns the contiguous lot there. Is there any, anything that could ever say if he sold off one piece or the other with this approval? Is subject to be invalid? I mean, because he owns the parcel next to it.
Well, that's why we were looking, wanting to see the combinations, so it's all one, one lot of record.
So he wants to join, join them together by survey?
Yeah, with a plat, just record it all together as one lot of record. In that way, any future subdivision could certainly happen if they could meet the C2 requirements.
Then it's just one lot.
Right. So it would just be one lot.
Any other questions for Kevin on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We were talking about, in the meeting, how they get access. It has to come back on the backside of the Rock Springs because it can't be accessed in, on Sam Ridley, correct?
That's correct. It would not, unless TDOT approves them an access, but I would be very, very surprised if that were to happen.
So then they would have to get approval from Spring House or?
Spring House or CVS or back through the Crowder parking lot.
Yeah.
Jerry, do you have something?
That was my question.
Okay. Any others?
So, does that have to be done before you approve it, when it gets the site plan part, or no?
We'll review that at site plan. Certainly, they'll have to have that before we can approve a building, a site plan with a building on.
Okay.
Any more? All right, thank you, Kevin. So, I'll take a motion on this.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion from Steve, second from Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving into item B, the packaged liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time, so we will move on to item C, consideration of the classification and compensation plan for town positions for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Who's got that one? Jeff?
Vice Mayor Counsel, each year, we ask for you to approve our classification and compensation plan for our town employees. This is the plan that sets the minimum and maximum salaries for each of our job titles. So that's what you've got for them.
Questions for Jeff?
Jeff, the, the 70th percentile that we've all been marching towards, I'm assuming the mid in this chart is 50%. Is that correct?
So, when you're talking about the 70th percentile, what we try to do is make sure that our pay grades, like the, the starting salary or our pay grade is the 70th percentile in the market. And so, all of these pay grades have been determined to fit that mold.
So, this is the minimum is the 70th percentile and the max. I got you. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any others? All right, hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Steve.
Second.
I don't know which one got it, I heard two. H.G. seconds, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Jeff, thanks for your work on this and keeping us ahead or at least in line with the market. Thank you.
We appreciate our employees. Item D, approval of a resolution to adopt the 2022 revision of the Rutherford County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Counselor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Counsel, the, all of the municipalities as well as the county, due to the 2000 Disaster Mitigation Act, which is a federal act, are required to have a detailed plan dealing with, how to deal with natural disasters and other hazards. And this has been updated within Rutherford County, and this, this plan would be just an updating of what we currently have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jeff on this?
You're allowed to read it to us, Jeff.
I would like, if you would, like, take a break first and sit on the mat there.
Maybe get a dissertation email sent out.
What did he tell you to sit on?
And we're moving along. Any further discussion on this? Take a motion.
A move we approve.
Tim's motion and...
Raquel.
Raquel's second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, consideration of a change to the terms of the Smyrna Police Department Standard Operating Procedures Relative to Officers' Facial Hair. Coming from a guy that doesn't have any facial hair.
No, sir. Vice Mayor Counsel, give this adjustment to our current policy that will allow for officers choosing to, to wear a well-groomed beard.
All right, well, I think that's probably something we're seeing more and more of in all the communities and...
Yes, sir.
Sometimes it's difficult to get people to want to work if they can't have a little facial hair, I guess, right?
Yes, sir. We are, again, in an attempt to try to remain competitive with other organizations, and again, this employment environment that we find ourselves currently, it's more and more difficult, and anything we can do is low cost or no cost such as this, again, to increase morale or maybe entice people to come join us. We'd like to do that. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Captain Dwyer?
No questions, but just a comment, you know, the way it's, way we read it, it doesn't really get into the details, but just for the public, we're not talking about duck dynasty here. We're talking about half-inch beards. Neatly trimmed is actually well-defined in the, in the updates, so.
Yes, sir.
Just, just so that we understand that.
Any others? Thank you, sir. We'll take a motion on this.
We approve.
Have a motion from Jerry.
Second.
And a second from Raquel. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, consideration of changes to the terms of the Smyrna Police Department Standard Operating Procedures Regarding the Storage of Evidence on a Temporary Basis for the Purpose of Processing. I know we've talked about this a little bit, but go ahead and share with everybody what we're doing here.
Yes, sir, it's just that, and oftentimes, unfortunately, crime scenes, there are liquids, bodily fluids, such as things as that, that need more time to dry before they can be put in an evidence environment. But we have a crime, a crime investigation room, laboratory, so to speak, where we have dryers and that type of thing in there that aren't actually in the evidence locker, so to speak, but they're in an adjacent, secured, limited access room where only a certain number of people, crime scene investigators have access to, those technicians, to that info, to that evidence. So we allow that evidence to dry for them to continue in that, in that processing of that evidence.
That was well-described, Captain. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Captain Dwyer on this? All right, we'll take a motion.
A move we approve.
Motion from Tim.
Second.
Second from Raquel. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. We're going on to number nine for other. So, you want me to read this? Or do you want to take it? You want to go ahead and read it?
Another.
Yeah. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the final change order for the AMI project and SRF funding. Sorry.
Yes, sir. So what this is, is the final balancing order for the water AMI project. It included the, the way the, the money shook out, we did save a little over $300,000 on, on what was projected, and the change order with the number of days we had to add because of delays in equipment and material.
Questions for Mike on this? None, so we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion from Raquel.
Yeah, which was?
Second.
Second from Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Item B, consideration of a resolution endorsing the continuance of utilizing the district attorney's office for appearances at Smyrna General Sessions Court.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Counsel, that you seek the two resolutions that were provided that we need to move forward with, approving the, the increase from $100 to $150, both for the public defenders and for the district attorneys as they do work in our court system.
Questions for Brian or Jeff at all on this one? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
A move we approve.
Motion from Steve.
Second.
Second from Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? And the motion carries. Item C, consideration of a resolution endorsing the continuance of utilizing the public defender's office for appearances at the Smyrna General Sessions Court.
Again, this just goes in alignment with the other, yes.
Questions for Brian on this?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Steve.
Second.
Second from Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And carries. Status reports.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have one other thing under other that I need to bring forward. As you guys know, we've been talking about the fire station addition that we're talking about doing out on 266. TM Partners is an architectural firm that we'd like to move forward with. I know it's not in your packet, we'll get that information to you, but we need to take a vote on that architectural firm so we can get started moving forward on that.
We've vetted all that, I'm sure, already.
Yes. And we've had discussions about it, I just, we need to get a formal vote.
So you're just asking for a vote to move forward with?
Move forward with TM Partners as an architectural partner.
Is there a dollar amount associated?
There is, and I apologize, I, I, we were trying to find that. I will get that information.
Any more questions for Brian on this? Do we have a motion?
A move we approve.
Motion from Tim.
Before you take your second, I found it, it's $499,982.
I withdraw my second. No, I'll leave it.
It's a pretty good price.
It is a good price.
I never heard you second, H.G.
Didn't?
No.
I did.
So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
They're gonna start the process on the...
Yes, this will allow us to begin the process, working with chief to do the architectural design for the fire station, and, and their contract will take us all the way through. They'll do pre-authorization of bidders to make sure we got good quality bidders, those type of things. It's, it's an inclusive package from basically concept to the, to the door lock. And they come highly recommended, they're doing work in this area with several of our surrounding communities, including Brentwood, Nolan'sville, some places like that, and they tend to, this is kind of their sweet spot, is fire stations.
Were they, were they involved in the bunkhouse addition, or was that?
No, that was somebody different.
We've never used this?
We've not used this.
I know that, you know, fire halls are kind of changing and evolving, at least in the town of Smyrna. We've added the bunkhouse, but at the one fire station there at Enon Springs we're adding, but I'm glad to see that we're looking for, you know, a design team that kind of specializes in this.
And we've had preliminary meetings with them and talked about what kind of space we'd be utilizing, those kind of things. The other thing, one of the things we talked about, we're really kind of looking for a more modern neighborhood look versus the industrial look to the fire stations and those kind of things. They presented some really nice prototypes that they had done in Brentwood, and again, they've got one under construction in Nolan'sville. I believe they just built one in Columbia, so. And, and the really nice part was, is from architecture all the way through the construction, they'll be our partners. Felt very solid, and we did some research, did some calls to some folks that have used them, got high, high marks, so.
Are we still considering a joint use there for possible substation for police as well, or?
Yes, we're looking at some multi-use space in this station. We're looking, you know, maybe even for some area that down the road, if we had another issue with the pandemic and stuff, we'd have some space available for testing or shots or those kind of things. So, we're looking to expand the use. We're looking for some space possibly for an outlying post for the police department to have one or two officers reporting through that at, at a later date. That's not something we're ready to do today, but, but it'd be a typical two-bay. We're looking at the parking lot size to be a little larger to do possible working with some of our partners like Nurse Food Bank and stuff on that, that side of, of Smyrna to be able to do some food drops, you know, different things. So we're looking for it to be more of a multi-use, not just a fire station.
Any others? Is the motion a second on the floor? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Just so you know, I think what I've discovered is through Agenda Quick, it got placed on a different agenda instead of this one. That would be much, probably my, my fault not even, Brian.
You're gonna get demerits.
I will. In the corner. I know I was struggling over here to find, I was like, I don't know we had this on the agenda tonight, what happened to it? So, I apologize that we had to kind of back up the plan a little bit, but we do need to move forward with this. Thank you.
Status report time. Are we there? Rex?
April state share tax, we received $762,848. That gives us $1,393,604 projected budget surplus. The local sales tax, we received $1,629,999. That gives us a $1,809,728 projected budget surplus.
Thank you, Rex. What's H.G. always like to say?
The numbers flesh it out.
Job local, right? It helps.
Hey Rex, I got a question. When you compare where we are right now versus where we were last year at the same time, what percentage higher are we on, on the money that's come in for this?
For that, on revenue stream or for?
Just for the taxes?
For the taxes? I don't have it in front of me, but I think we're 15%.
How much?
15, I think.
15% higher than it was last year at the same time.
Yeah, the chart, the chart's showing 11.
11, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, for 11% so far. We'll probably end up at closer to 15, rather.
Thank you, Rex. All right, it's announcement time. Any of our directors have anything you need to announce? How about you, Amber?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Nothing for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Right.
Vice Mayor Counsel, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share. One, just wanted to mention our police chief wife, Lynn Arnold. She had some surgery today on her knee. I think it was total replacement. I think she's home and resting. I just want to wish her well in her recovery and, and we'll say a prayer for her nursemaid over the next couple of days as he...
I think you need to say a prayer for Lynn.
Yeah, you're probably right. I do have a couple of things I wanted to share. It's always nice to get nice comments from our citizens on work that's being done, and I just wanted to share a couple real quick. This is from the Smiths on Holston Drive. This is from the Smiths on Holston Drive. They recently called the water and sewer department for a problem with their sewer that has been recurring for years. The crew took the time to fix the problem that plumbers and others had missed. They were very appreciative, and thank you to Randall, Blake, Justin Lloyd, and Chris. Also, we got a nice call. Maggie Sims in our treasury department received a call from a customer wanting to thank Derek Francis for the work that he had done while at her house on a gas line, and she took time to, to call that in, so that's always special when that happens. Also, we got a note of thanks that came in from a citizen. It came Eva, Eve Shockley. She was involved in a motor vehicle accident on Friday around lunchtime at the traffic light at Lee Victor Parkway in Old Nashville Highway, and she just wanted to thank the firefighters and the Smyrna Police Department that responded. They were very attentive to her and her passenger as far as taking care of them, waited for the police officers to get the report done, and firefighters were out there sweeping up the debris and making the area safe, and she wanted to recognize them. Also, we got, this one I think came in from Facebook. This was a, a nice compliment. It came through to the fire department, but it was for the whole town. Would like to say thank you to everyone involved in the Memorial Day service held today. Everyone was professional, courteous, and friendly. They all came together as one and each other and, and their own duty for the event. Outstanding day, heartwarming to see. And that was a very nice event. I know most of you were able to be there, and that's a very special time, I think, for us. Our veterans mean a lot to this community, and they're definitely in the fiber of the fabric of this community, as we know that Seward Air Force Base really is kind of the foundation our town was built in, so. Couple of other things real quick. Of course, you hear me talk about love where you live. We're continuing to push that issue. Trash is, is continuing to be a problem. I, I don't know what else I can say. It's just, folks, do your very best to take your litter to the garbage receptacles, take it home, dump it when you're at the service station, whatever it takes. Please don't throw it out on our street. We have a beautiful town, and, you know, we need to love this place. Next, we have Boat Day coming up. That's June 18th at Jefferson Springs Recreation Center from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Come out and enjoy the day. There'll be some giveaways. There'll be some kayaks and canoes that the kids and the adults both can use those and ride around a little bit and get to feel the water. There'll be life preservers there for all, everyone that's going out on the water, and there'll be there, there'll be folks there to teach you some boat safety and water safety. So, come out and enjoy the day. Boats, gift cards, and more. And also, I think Tom's not here tonight, but I think we have two kayaks that will be giving away in conjunction with our friends at Sports Academy, so, or Academy Sports. I always say it backwards. July 1st is, is pretty close to being upon us, and that's a very special day for us. We will be honoring the, the community and our Independence Day on July 1st of 2022 at Lee Victory Recreation Park. Celebration begins at 5:00 p.m. Fireworks will begin right at dark. Chief, that's about 8:45, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. But if you, if you don't have anything to do and you want to come out and enjoy a really nice day in the park, there'll be music, there'll be food trucks, there'll be vendors, there'll be face painting for the kids and bouncy houses, and of course, we have all the park available for people to enjoy, and then again, we'll gather around the Coos Memorial and watch a fantastic fireworks display. Charles is sitting back there, and he says that we will have a second entrance available to get in and out of the park by July 1st, right? Charles?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Next, I want to mention that in observance of Juneteenth of the holiday, which is Sunday, June 19th, the town will be observing that holiday on June 20th, and the offices will be closed. Our wastewater and water plant and Parks and Rec golf course, and of course, the police and fire department will continue to work, and we appreciate those folks providing those services, but we will be observing Juneteenth on Monday, June 20th, and town offices will be closed. Vice Mayor Counsel, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Jeff, what do you have for us?
I don't have anything this evening.
Raquel?
All right. Well, congratulations to Stewart's Creek Middle School girls on being state champions. I was glad they could all come out and, and we could honor them this evening. And regarding the proclamations, I also wanted to say on the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and Walk, I want to encourage people to get out and participate that, within that in October when it comes, because as was read, many of us have someone in our family or know someone who's experienced that, and I personally have gone through that, and so I, I do encourage people to get out and walk and support that organization. And Men's Health Month, I encourage all of our men and young, young boys to all, also be aware of Men's Health Month and encourage the women in their lives to, not necessarily nag.
Stay on.
But stay on the men in their lives to go out and, and take care of all of their, their health needs, because it is very important. So, I appreciate the proclamation being done about that today. And also, I'd like to thank Chief Culbertson, because at the workshop last month, you left us some fire swag, and I meant to thank you for that. The fire hat, the hats and the T-shirts for the Police and Fire Academy that is actually going on this weekend, so thank you for, for the swag. And that's all I have.
Thank you. H.G.?
Um, I'd like to pass condolences out to the, to the Steele family. Ms. Dot Steele passed away this last week, and I guess I've known the Steele family about as long as anybody in Smyrna. Steve and myself started, started school together at, at the Smyrna Primary School and went all the way through, and the Steels were, oh gosh, our Cub Scout leaders and always there for the different athletic events and such as that, and Ms. Dot was just a, she was a fine lady, picture of the, of the southern lady. Today is my baby's birthday. Mary Holland has a birthday, and I, I forget how old she is, but. And before we come back together, my son will have his birthday next Tuesday, so I want to wish both of them a happy birthday. And that's all I got for tonight, Mark.
That's it? Usually you have something else to add.
Um, well, we've already talked about the shop local, and everybody's really gonna have to do it, because Steve has set us a goal to have an increase of 15% by the end of the year, so we've, we've got something to, to shoot for. And outside of that, I, I never did know what happened to this, but check it out. I don't know if y'all can read that or not, but this is a be kind tile. You want to try that, Tim?
Well, thank you. And Charles, we're gonna keep that in mind if that entrance doesn't open up by July 1st.
It'll be open July 1st.
The be kind tile may be yours. All right. Is that all, H.G.? Yes, sir. Tim?
Yeah, I'll add my condolences to Steve Donnie and the Steele family and the loss of their mom. I know that's always tough, having gone through that myself. On a separate and happier note, I had the privilege and the pleasure to attend the ribbon cutting for Scooter's Coffee. As a matter of fact, Rex was with me and Todd. And, you know, we talk about shopping local. They've committed to two stores, I believe, in the area for coffee, and thanks to Rex, I was treated to a Carmalicious. It was very good. Thank you again, Rex, and thank you for Scooter's for investing in our town and allowing us to drink local coffee.
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 That Carmalicious made you pretty sweet, didn't it?
I needed the caffeine. You know, my grandkids were in town this week, and I'm not used to burning the candle at both ends with a nine and seven-year-old, so I needed the caffeine that day, so it was very welcome.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else?
That's it. Jerry?
Yeah, I have most of the same things that you have already mentioned, but again, condolences to Donnie and Steve and M.C. on the loss of Ms. Dot. I tell you, she was a, she was an angel of angels. She was the sweetest lady that, one that I ever knew. She would just never said anything bad about anybody. She always had a smile on her face and will certainly be missed. You may be talking about this later, Mark, but Simply Smyrna last Saturday night was a really good event. It was just fun to be out tonight, but the weather was perfect and just had a great time there seeing a lot of people. Looked like there was a lot just ready to get out, and so I had a great time there. Also, congratulations Stewart's Creek. That's awesome, to, to be able to do that, and they, they had a great season, and so we do thank them for representing the town and congratulate them as well. And H.G. also had to say happy birthday to your daughter as well. That's today, so.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Heather. That's it.
Thanks, Jerry. Steve?
Um, a couple of things. First, I think before we meet again will be Father's Day. I think it's the 19th, so happy Father's Day in advance to all the fathers out there. I was trying to think, we, I think we meet on the 23rd. I'm trying to think through the days to make sure I was correct. So, happy Father's Day to my dad and all of those other fathers out there. I also wanted to mention a couple of birthdays that Mark and I had the joy of celebrating. Both my wife and Mark's wife share the same birthday.
Yep.
So, June 4th, this past Friday, was Pam and Connie's birthdays, and make sure that if Pam's watching, she knows that I told the world.
You got me out of trouble right there.
And she has been watching, so I saw her on there. Happy birthday to Pam. I will not say how old she is, however, a waitress at a restaurant correctly guessed this week, which was interesting, so anyway. Also, my, my son's birthday is coming up, June 17th, before we meet again. He will be 22. Is that right? Yeah, 20, no, 23. He'll be 23. This is the first year we've had him home for his birthday since he's now out of the Marine Corps, which is gonna be fun. I'm gonna, I'm gonna politic pretty hard for a, a cake, so. And then I also would like to add some additional condolences to the Whitley family. I think many of us knew Harold Whitley very well. Harold and Connie were very involved in Volunteer Park and the construction and configuration of that park. I think they were probably founding members, if not early members, of the Smyrna Girls Softball League, which predates the Fast Pitch League. Harold passed away about two weeks ago, 10 days ago, and just want to add the condolences there. I went to school with Connie, his daughter, and they've both been, I think, Volunteer of the Year winners for us, both Harold and Wanda, so condolences to the Whitley family, and that's all.
All right, thank you. So, I think we've got a few announcements and slides. I don't know if they're gonna pop up yet or not, but I'll just go over with you real quick. The Restore Wellness Ribbon Cutting was this week. Looks, there it is, and it looks like we had some representatives there from our town to welcome them into our community and their business, and we're glad to have you. The second one was Scooter's Coffee Ribbon Cutting. There you see Mayor Reed, and I see Tim back there.
That's Simply Smyrna.
Oh, that's Simply Smyrna. Well, okay, they got me out of line here, I think. But anyway, let's go back to Simply Smyrna. There we go. That is Simply Smyrna. So, Jerry mentioned it a while ago, and it was a great event. The weather was perfect. Couldn't have had better weather. When I looked at it, I got to thinking, there's so, as many people here tonight, it seems like, as there were maybe at Depot Days. Large crowd. So, kudos to Carpe and some of the people that helped put that on, and Mike, your Parks Department, all your help. We appreciate you making community events fun. You see the mayor speaking to the crowd there. I think everybody was there except Steve, but he was out of town, and we missed him, but it was a great event. Next, okay, the Police and Fire Youth Academy, I think, is going on as we speak, right?
That's right.
This week? So, hope everybody gets a chance to be a part of that that never has. If it's full, I don't know, is it full?
It's very close.
It's very close to full, so. You may want to contact City Hall here if you got somebody who wants to participate in that. And I think that's all my slides. Good. So, as you know, Mayor Reed's not here tonight. She's doing some simple recovery. We want to wish her well. And Melissa Scott, I think, is recovering, continuing recovery. Is that right, Jeff?
She is.
And so, we wish her well, and she's not back to work, I don't think, is she?
Not just yet.
Right, so.
She's working.
Look forward to having her back. Same for me with the Steele family. Steve and Donnie and the whole family there. H.G. mentioned, if you've been in this town any time at all, and I think most of us up here have grown up here and lived most of our lives here, and so the roots of some of the family members that are passing on now are people that we grew up with, and so to Donnie, to Donnie and Steve and the entire family, Peggy as well, we just want to wish you guys our condolences and let you know we'll be thinking of you. Memorial Day, Brian, you mentioned Memorial Day. It made me think of something that most of us up here will remember, Ann Stewart. Ann was very, very involved in Memorial, Memorial Day celebrations when we used to do it here at Town Hall out in front, so Ann has since passed, and she was a big contributor to our community. Debbie and Daryl live up the street from me, and she was always waving and stopping and speaking, and Ann was full of life and a wonderful woman, so I just want to, just kind of let her know that, their family know that we're thinking of them still. And lastly, you know, I mentioned to you, Steve mentioned that Connie had a birthday, and I know I've told you all a couple of times, she's now retired and she's enjoying